All right. Good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, July twenty-second. Our first item is the approval of the agenda, and we do have one addition. It's a proclamation for Marine Kelly Johnson Day, which Paul will talk a little bit about, and we'll do that right after the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Right. Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. We have a locked door. There we go. All right. Our next item is citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda? There appear to be none in the audience. Any online?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. We will move into the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move for the approval of bills and vouchers.
Second.
Right. Motion by Commissioner Ebinger and second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from July eighth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baer, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. We will move into our agenda addition item, and Commissioner Krabunov, do you want to lead us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a board member of the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County, I want to, along with others, recognize our executive director, Marine Kelly Johnson, and she retired at the end of last month. We got a new executive director, Laura Ford, who has previously worked with the North Dakota Historical Society. Last night was her, last evening was her retirement party. About a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty people were there in celebration of the work she's done. And I just want to have just a little background for her. So she came to Clay County in two thousand and eight, her and along with a employee at that time, right after Mark Peel, the archivist, the two of them, came in. And at that time, there was real financial difficulties with the Historical Society reining in with the new, with the ship and all that responsibility, as well as the Cultural Society. She got that, working hard, the financial piece, starting and improving the museum, started making gains financially, and at the same time, a merger went on that then, at that point, brought the Historical Society and the Culture Society together. Other challenges along the way were the nineteen ninety-seven flood, when the flood came into the museum area and flooded everything. They had to work through that. And, but lo and behold, they've, you know, expanded. They have seven employees now. Museum is doing great work in the exhibits, and I encourage people to go over there whenever they can. And anyway, she's done wonderful work. So with that, along with the work and all the things she's done, I guess I'd like to be the reader of a proclamation that we have here with Clay County for Marine Kelly Johnson Day. And let us read, whereas Marine Kelly Johnson has served as the executive director of the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County for seventeen years. And...
Whereas, through her oversight of the museum, archives, and cultural programming, the Historical Cultural Society of Clay County serves as a vital community partner in fulfilling its mission to collect, preserve, interpret, and share the history and culture of Clay County, Minnesota. And...
Whereas, she has shepherded the organization through difficult times, including catastrophic flooding that threatened the museum. And...
Whereas, she leaves your organization stronger and more stable as a result of her successful fundraising efforts and sound fiscal management. And...
Whereas, Marine's dedication to promoting equity and inclusion has made Clay County a more welcoming and vibrant community.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five as Marine Kelly Johnson Day on the occasion of her retirement and in recognition of her service and to the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County and the contributions to our community. Adopted this twenty-second day of July twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Krabunov, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. All right. Thank you. Next, we will move into our eight thirty-five item, and it's a request to fill vacant social work position in Adult Mental or Adult and Behavioral Health Division. Excuse me.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning, Quin.
Commissioners.
Kirsten, good morning.
Yes, I am here requesting a motion to fill a vacant position in Kirsten's unit in the Adult and Behavioral Health. I do want to know, or to note that we're doing something a little different with this. Following this resignation, we took a look at really what our service demands are, and we're recommending to reclassify this vacant civil commitment position to a Rule seventy-nine targeted case management position. This proposed change reflects a strategic shift in our caseload duties, moving from court-ordered, non-billable civil commitment responsibilities, preventative billable case management services, under the Rule seventy-nine case management framework. Right now, we have three experienced staff that are doing the civil commitment responsibilities. This position was a fourth. We've seen a reduction in the civil commitment numbers over the previous few years, and we do believe that our existing staff pattern is sufficient capacity for that caseload. Kirsten and I talked about a lot of different options of if we needed the position at all. However, Rule seventy-nine case manager can help individuals earlier in their mental health journey, often avoiding higher-cost interventions such as psychiatric hospitalizations or residential treatment. We did bring this request through PIC on July fifteenth and was given support to move forward to the full board. We would post immediately if approved here today and work on filling that. I did attach a wage calculator as long, as well as the revenue projections for this new revenue stream of Rule seventy-nine. This position is a budgeted position. For twenty twenty-five, it was grade eighteen, step four. We will likely fill this at grade eighteen, step one, generating a minor cost savings of nine thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars. However, by shifting the caseload duties to this revenue-generating targeted case management position, we're projected to receive approximately one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in annual revenue with this change. I guess with that, I would yield for any questions that you may have.
As Quinn mentioned, this was discussed at the PIC committee meeting and certainly had full support of the PIC committee. Any further questions, comments?
Sounds like nothing positive, but positive to me, I should say. And certainly, I guess, being as part of adult mental health, we hear the challenges every meeting about the pressures and the demand on Rule seventy-nine. So I'd make a motion to hire one full-time social worker for the Adult and Baby Health Division. What's backfill? Should there be internal interest?
Second.
All right. Do we have a motion by Commissioner Krabunov, second by Commissioner Ebinger? Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. All right. Position granted. All right, Quin, you've got the next item as well. Request to approve leased department vehicle dedicated for use by the Social Service Fraud Unit.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. As you can see, we're proposing to lease a designated department vehicle to support our Fraud Prevention Investigations Unit. This unit right now makes, makes up two investigators who conduct interviews, surveillance, and field investigations all throughout the county and the region, often on short notice. Historically, this unit has relied on our general county fleet vehicles, the checkout system that goes along with that, or their personal vehicles with a mileage reimbursement. Increased demands across all of the different departments have made vehicle availability a little inconsistent, leading to delays and inefficiencies when those investigators get calls that they need to go out on immediately. To ensure timely and effective investigations, we propose leasing a vehicle through the Enterprise Fleet Management System that Joe operates, dedicated exclusively just for the two FBI staff. This operational change will enhance our team's responsiveness and efficiency and may reduce some costs associated with the mileage reimbursement, being that that vehicle would be a part of the fleet vehicle system. Given the sensitive nature of fraud investigations, I'm also requesting that this leased vehicle be unmarked. Marked vehicles can compromise the discretion necessary for field investigations, surveillance, and interviews. Therefore, I'm requesting a deviation from our standard county fleet vehicle policy to accommodate the specific needs of the fraud unit. I did also bring this request to the PIC committee on July fifteenth, which again, supported bringing it forward to you all here today. I have coordinated with Joe. He's waiting for approval from you all to move forward with this. We are looking at a, I believe it was a Trailblazer leased for five hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents per month, totaling approximately sixty-two hundred dollars a year. We are able to do this because we received a, or request this because we received a significant increase to our Fraud Prevention Investigations Grant. It went from a hundred and twenty-five thousand to a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and that's due to the rising caseload and increased investigative work that our two staff have done. So it's wonderful to see that their hard work is paying off. We've earmarked approximately eight thousand dollars in the grant to build in this leased vehicle to fully cover the cost of it. I did confirm with DHS, and the investment in the vehicle does align with the grant's expectations for improving fraud prevention infrastructure and our response capabilities. With that, I would yield for any questions that you have.
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
Yes. Commissioner Baer.
Could you walk us through when someone wants to check out a vehicle, what are the steps and what happens when there isn't a vehicle? How are you notified there isn't a vehicle available?
So we have in our Outlook calendars, on our email, all of the fleet vehicles are listed on there. So you can go, if you need a vehicle, you go in your Outlook calendar, you filter which vehicles you want to look. You'll then be able to see which ones are available, which ones aren't, without getting too technical. There's a scheduling assistant that's in there as well, so you can go, I need one this day at this time, and that's when you'll learn about it. I mean, it's a five, ten-minute process at the max. The issue becomes if you look at one car, and then you look at the next car, and then you look at the, and they're all, you know, they're all booked, then the issue is, well, somebody just called in a tip, and they want to move on it immediately. So it isn't the most cumbersome, but we also have an opportunity to use these additional grant funds for this purpose and kind of eliminate a barrier.
So, so another question, follow-up question. So when you have a tip come in, you guys want to act on it right away? Get out and find out if it's a true tip or not?
Yep.
Those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to point out that we had, you know, some discussion on this in PIC, and, and I, you know, I just think with the complication, I think our, the PIC committee felt that with the complications of this, this work and the need for it, and that also goes to not only the vehicle but being unmarked. We, we felt both of those were important for, to have immediate access to those vehicles for that purpose. And again, that's, you know, when we're talking about this thing, we're talking about, you know, bringing, trying to eliminate fraud and taxpayer dollars. And so this is a, it's, it's a good investment to have. And at some point in time, we'll probably get a report on, on what the fraud unit does bring in, in terms of recapturing dollars, and that's worthwhile. So Commissioner Ebinger.
Yes. Also during PIC, pretty gratifying to hear how productive our two investigators have been. If you can touch on that, Quin, it was, they were certainly not looking at any, these guys aren't, aren't performing at anything but an astounding level when you look at the production of other units and...
Yeah, I did bring that with. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Ebinger. Just to kind of show you a county comparison to what our two fraud investigators, and this is the prevention side. There's a prevention side of fraud and a criminal side. So we're talking the prevention. That's before a benefit would go out incorrectly. So in Clay County, obviously, two, twenty twenty-three population being sixty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-eight, they saved approximately one point two six million dollars in benefits not going out. In comparison to Ramsey County at five hundred and thirty-six thousand people, they only saved one point two two million dollars. Our two investigators worked seven hundred and six total fraud prevention cases, where all of Ramsey County worked nine hundred. So I do have to give them a definite shout-out for how, they're definitely punching above their weight class when it comes to the work that they do for us. Thank you.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
I'd like to make motion that, excuse me here. I, he's got me on the back page here. Motion to lease a department vehicle dedicated for use by Social Services Fraud Unit, and that that vehicle be unmarked.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. All right. You can work with Joe, and how do, any idea how long it'll take to get the vehicle, or?
I'm, I'm not sure. I would yield to whatever Joe says is quickest and best, whatever that option is.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have our budget presentation with Central Regional Juvenile Center. Good morning, James. Welcome.
Morning, Chair, Commissioners. I'm here today to present the twenty twenty-six proposed budget. I have two budgets to present. I got the Secure Budget and the Non-Cure Budget. I'm just starting out for a little bit of background. The Secure Budget, the Secure Programs kind of operates underneath a Cooperative Service Agreement between eleven different counties, ten in Minnesota, one in North Dakota, which is Cass County, with ultimate authority lying with this board. I brought this budget to my advisory board last week, and they've approved it at their level. So I will just, I guess, start with my proposed budget for the Secure Program. Starting out in the revenue section, you kind of see that the Clay County's cost for twenty twenty-six is slightly going to go down from twenty twenty-five. That's kind of based on, on the structure of the Cooperative Service Agreement. Usage, cost is based on usage in a two-year look back. Clay County's usage has remained the same. It's about thirty percent. However, we've had significant use with our non-members, which has driven that cost down for our members in total. Overall juvenile programming in the state of Minnesota has, has gone up significantly. I'd say it's outpaced healthcare costs in that, how much it's gone up. But with the investment made back in two thousand and eighteen, we're able to stabilize that here, here at home. So as you can see, you know, kind of requesting, with a new request, you know, a shade over eight hundred thousand, which is down from last year, just kind of scrolling down, the one point six million is the other member counties. The two point one million projected income is based on thirteen non-member youth. We feel like I can definitely hit that, that mark. Two thousand and twenty-four, we hit two point four million. Miscellaneous reimbursement, fifty-eight thirty-eight, that's a combination between counties that are paying back medical bills. So we'll pay a majority of the medical bills that come in, and then we backbill the counties for that cost. So a Clay County kid or a Traverse County kid has some sort of a medical expense, we'll pay that, and then we'll pay the county that, that it came from. Again, healthcare costs, MA cuts off in the Secure Program, so a lot of that funding just falls right to the county to foot the bill on. Has anybody got any questions on the revenue portion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Clay County, that would be, we're, we're going to be paying about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars less. Is that what that means?
No.
No. There, there's a new request in there.
For the Board of Care of Juvenile of Clay County there, on the revenue side.
Yeah. So if I can, if I, so that, so if I can explain it, so in, in twenty twenty-five, we budgeted a total cost for Clay County's share of eight hundred and thirty. The twenty twenty-six proposal is the seven sixty-eight plus the thirty-three thousand.
Okay.
So, you know, those two combined are very close to the eight thirty. Still less.
Yep.
And that, that thirty-three thousand that's there under the new request is Clay County's portion of those new requests listed below, which is the salaries of seventy-five thousand plus the insurance and all those other. That's Clay County's share of, of the total amount. The balance then goes to the other counties in the new request.
Okay.
And I do want to, I do want to point out while we're talking about the revenue side there, the, the dollar number that we're, we're looking at for Clay County is going to, you know, roughly around eight hundred and six, eight hundred and seven thousand for twenty, when you add, add in the new request. I want to just mention that if it was not for the work of that facility and the non-member usage that we get, that number would be more like one point, almost one point two million. So that non-member revenue really helps bring down not only Clay County's costs, but all member counties. So, so there's a, it's just been working great. And that's where that one million, one fifty-eight comes in on the very miscellaneous revenue item. That's bringing in the revenues over expenditures from twenty twenty-four. So we're always, we're always lagging a little bit, but we're able to use some of those revenues over expenditures based on the non-member income. And I do want to point out, we, as James mentioned, we did have our regional meeting, and the full board fully endorsed not only the new request, but also the budget as it was presented. Commissioner Ebinger.
Yep. And just, I was at that meeting as well. You seldom see a group of eleven counties and entities come in and vote on a budget this year where everybody leaves smiling. James has done an excellent job of running a top-notch operation and running, running it effectively and efficiently. So this is, this is, this is very good news budget on the Secure end here.
You're setting the bar good there, James.
Let's go through the rest of the budget.
Yeah, right.
Now, going to the expense portion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So bouncing down in the expense portion, you can see that salaries are regular. You see an increase of seven point six five. That's multiple things. It's the colas, the step increases, but also that's actually folding in a couple nurses that's shared with our non-Cure Program, too. And you'll see that if you bounce all the way down into the expense portion, the other professional services, the sixty-two seventy-one, you'll see a drop of about forty-five percent, which is probably about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty-five thousand. That, that, that is that nursing contract that, that we, that we stopped with, and now we hired our, our, our own nurses. So that's where that is. You'll see part-time salaries costing a little bit more money there again. And part-time staff, they fill in when our full-time staff are out. Also, there are variable hour shifts actually just built in, and that sort of a thing. We have times where we need to one-on-one youth, all sorts of different, different reasons that we need an additional staff there. Also, kind of some of the increase, too, is kind of some of that earned sick-and-safe planning, you know, if, if that does cause staff to go out, we always need to fill our shifts. So if somebody's gone, we need somebody to fill, and that, that becomes a variable hour expense. The overtime, we'll see that, not requesting anymore, but it's about the same as last year. Again, a line share of that overtime expense is our variable hours working a holiday, and because they're paid at time and a half, and that's just the way that the time cards reflected is. So that's, that's what goes into that expense line. Kind of scrolling down, you'll see an increase in salaries. Other, that is what the Secure Program pays, I guess, the maintenance, or Joe's, or Clay County's Maintenance Department for our share of their labor and their skills. Scrolling down, you'll see basically a lot of the, the health insurance and everything, but you'll see the PRA sticks up a little bit higher than like the FICA. The reason for that is the PRA's rates for correctional went up from six point eight to ten point two five, and that's, you'll see that's that jump there.
It's the employer's share.
Yep, the employer's share. That's correct. Association dues and memberships, or computer system, or CSTS, which is kind of roped in with everybody else in the state that manages our files and stuff. The cost of operating that program has increased. Scrolling down, I adjusted the, the heating down because just kind of reflective of the previous two years of what we, we used. So I adjusted that down. Other professional services, I just talked about that. That one went down due to the nursing contract. Training, you'll see the training went down, and it's not that we're doing less training, we're actually doing more training. It's just that we have, our, some of our staff are certified in, in things. So we've sent staff to get certified to actual train people. So we're doing that, a lot of that in-house, and that's, that's where we're at with, with that. So the training hasn't gone down, just, that line item has gone down, but training costs, that, that would be another reflective of up there in the variable hour cost, too. When our full-time staff need to leave the floor for a couple hours to do some training, we need a variable hour staff there. Scrolling down, building insurance, that comes from the auditor's office. You'll see a twenty percent increase in health supplies. We kind of moved toward some machines. We bought some, well, besides the AEDs, we, we have four of them now, but some calm nursing sticks, vital machines. And it's, it's common practice now for us to, to take vitals of, of a youth that's, has any sort of complaint. And it's good to get a baseline, you know, oxygen, pulse, blood pressure, and it kind of gives our staff or our nursing staff, we've always had it, but now our staff utilize it quite a bit, too. You know, it's just like operating a piece of machinery that has all the, the gauges on there. If something's wrong, high blood pressure, high oil pressure, whatever, there's an emergency, then you know, then it, then it's a no-brainer. It just kind of gives us a baseline of where we're at and what we're looking at. So we've, we've purchased a couple of them, and they cost, you know, a couple thousand dollars apiece. You'll see a new one in sixty-six oh five, machinery and automotive equipment. That is the leased vehicle, the leased vehicle that we got. That's, and then at the very bottom, miscellaneous, a line share of that is our, is our backgrounds. They cost about two hundred bucks apiece, and we pretty much have to background everybody. That's what those costs are. And subscriptions, different HIPAA compliant platforms. Other than that, that kind of runs us through the expense portion of, of the Secure Budget.
What's the origin of five percent? What's that?
That is built into the Cooperative Service Agreement. In the, in the event that we don't hit that, we don't have to do like a cash call to the counties. So it's, it's automatically built in. So it'll go back to the counties at, at the...
That's part, that ends up being part of the revenues over...
It will, yep. Kind of a, an emergent... Kind of a, an emergency type of a thing that's built into the Cooperative Service Agreement, so, so I guess Clay County ultimately isn't left on the hook if something goes haywire.
One, just one more thing on the revenue side, if I can, too, the, the board did also approve an increase in the uh, non-member rate for two thousand and twenty-six, it went from three seventy-five to four hundred and fifty dollars per day. Uh, so that will probably see additional revenues, and, and we're always very careful on that, we wanna make sure what our, what the other agencies around that uh, provides services similar to ours are. And we will be, even with that increase to four fifty, we will be within five dollars, I think, of the next one closest to us, with the exception of Crookston. Crookston is still less, but they only have an eight-bed facility, and so there's, it's not like they're gonna be able to take a lot of additional clientele, so, so that should potentially see some additional revenues as well, so.
One, one question, sure. So, the expense side, is that just Clay County's, or is that the eleven county groups? We, we're gonna pay a percentage of that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, so, that number that's up on the top, that's seven hundred and sixty-eight, that's our percentage of this, of the expenditures less other outside revenues.
So that's our percentage of all this?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
That makes it even simpler to see.
Yeah. All right, any, is, any other questions on the secure, you wanna, uh, go through the non-secure?
Yep, I will go through the non-secure now. So, the non-secure one's been very, very tricky lately. Um, the last three, four years have been very, very challenging in that non-secure unit, given, um, the lack of placement options in the state of Minnesota. Um, and a lot of things are falling on, um, I don't know, programming, because there's, there's nothing, there's no PRTFs, there's no, um, two forty-five D licensing programming, um, group homes, so a lot of that is falling on Clay County's um, safety net here of, of the Clay County program, so, um, kind of projecting, um, two point two million in usage um, from Clay and about one point six, um, from non-Clay. Miscellaneous reimbursement, the National School Lunch Program and, and medical paybacks, and then we do have that, that JAG grant of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Kind of moving down into the expense portion, you'll see that, um, again, slight little increase um, for the salaries regular, which is about six percent, that's the COLA steps and nursing. Um, but you'll see that there's a significant, bigger increase in the non, in the variable hour. The reason for that is that it's, it was built, the full-time was built in, and they weren't hired until later this year. There was, there was a delay in getting us into that new female program. Um, so that's what, so that's what we didn't hire until, until we were able to open. So I don't know if that makes sense, I can explain that a little bit further if, if you want. Kind of going in, again, overtime, that's mostly, um, the holidays, um, for variable hour, time and a half. Uh, same increase for PERA, same explanation there. Association dues and memberships, again, that's, that's up, again, that's the same, that's a CSTS, that's our computer program. Counting and auditing, that comes from the auditor's office. Equipment repair and maintenance, I'm requesting a little bit more there, um, about twenty-five hundred dollars more just to upkeep the facility. Um, keep it looking nice and presentable. Building insurance, that comes from the auditor's office. Repair and maintenance supplies, same thing, um, as far as upkeep. Miscellaneous, that's just running more backgrounds again, um, because of the, the new program. And different subscriptions to academic journals and whatnot. I don't know, does anybody have any questions on?
Well, really, I think, you know, I think, uh, what we have, so the, if you look down at the total expenditures, the three million ninety-four, and then if you, um, subtract out the, um, or subtract from that, the grant and the miscellaneous reimbursement that we get, and the, um, Board and Care of, um, outside entities, I, for lack of a better term, right, that's sixteen, one point six million?
Yep.
That, that leaves you with, to, to balance the budget, we need to levy two million two twenty-five. And that compares to two thousand and twenty-five of one million eight fifty. So, and a lot of that, I prob, is probably attributed to that, um, the new women's area, right?
Yeah, it, it's, it's very, this, this program, it's very dynamic, and, and a lot of things, it's contributed to that new program, it's contributed to um, lack of other options in the state, so, um, it could be looked at as, as a positive thing, instead of sending a kid to somewhere else in Minnesota for care and treatment, we're taking care of them here for care and treatment. Um, but it really all depends on what, what it is, but basically, um, traditionally, um, years back, about half of our programming in that program came from non-Clay County. Um, but recently, Clay County's needs have increased, and the increase of needs have came from all counties, but Clay County has that program, so we're gonna adjust and do what we can to take care of Clay County's needs if they can't be met elsewhere.
And, and that's, and that's why you're showing no real increase in, in non, or, uh, outside of Clay County, you're showing no real revenue increase there.
That's correct.
Because of the growing needs of, your, your non-secure's gonna be full, and it's gonna be full mostly with Clay County kids.
Yeah, yep.
Yes.
Yeah, so, is there a certain ratio there, or do we always get the first priority?
First priority is always Clay County, and then, and then we fill in other where.
Yeah, in the, in the, um, non-secure, we, we have no partners. That is, that is a Clay County only.
Yeah.
Facility. Uh, when James and his staff and Josh, um, believe that they can bring in outside, uh, kids to help them out, um, the revenue is generated and he'll do it, but I think, unfortunately, what we're seeing is more demands are just for Clay County kids, um, going into that facility.
What would create the scenario to have to send somebody out? Not be placed here, Clay County person not be placed here?
It, it depends, um, and, and some of it would be, um, you know, a more appropriate setting, so two forty-five D licensing would, would be your, um, group homes. Um, that would be, that would be beneficial for some of the youth if they could get into some of them. Unfortunately, their aggression doesn't allow them to, um, the level of violence doesn't allow them to. Um, also PRTFs, um, if those were available, um, but again, a PRTF. Um, so, I mean, it's, it's just very dynamic, every kid's different.
Yeah.
Uh, and their needs, so I mean, it's really hard to, to pin it down, I mean, it's, it's.
That's right, it was a sort of a general question, so, yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Bear.
So, out of the twenty-five bed non-secure facility, what percentage of those beds are male, and then we just opened up a female side? What is it, what, what's a breakdown per male side and female side, and how many, how many staff did we bring on for the female side? Just so the audience knows.
Oh, so, for the new female program, we brought on four new full-time staff. Um, and that was budgeted, um, in, in two thousand and twenty-five, but we didn't really hire, I meant, you know, and we didn't really hire until just recently, when it opened. Um, um, again, there's, the, the transition program for the males, um, is eight. Um, and the transition program for the females, we're actually licensed for twelve, but we're designed for eight. Um, and the, uh, the, the non-secure portion, which is what our first floor north, um, that's about seventeen beds totally maxed out. Um, but, uh, realistically, with that population, thirteen is, is really pushing, pushing the limits of that, that space.
Thank you. You got, you got the two transitional components, you have eight and, for males and eight for females. And then, the others, the others, there's, there still could be a combination of both males and females in the other thirteen too.
Yep.
Just that, um, the transitional, that's more for the older, um,
Yeah.
older kids, right?
Yep.
Trying to get a start before they go out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
One more?
Yes, Commissioner Kravina.
Uh, back to when they're unable to be here, no matter what situation, those charges that we pay, is that shown here?
No.
Nope.
Okay.
That's in social services.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for James? Well, I, I wanna again compliment you on your, you and your staff, the work that you do, that both the secure and non-secure. Um, as Commissioner Abinger stated, the, all of our member counties are very appreciative of not only the service that you provide to the youth, but, um, the dedication that you all have to doing it, so, thank you for, for that, and thank you for your budget presentation.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a closed session. Contract discussion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to go into closed session.
All right, we have a motion to go into closed session by Commissioner Mojo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Abinger, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried. All right, we are, oh, wait. There, sir. We are back in session, um, our next item on our agenda are the committee reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, last Tuesday, I attended the Clay County Planning Commission meeting, that was a fairly long meeting, um, but we did, uh, permit the first CUP for a cannabis business in South Morehead, you can also see the minutes for the additional items we talked about, there was a gravel, uh, discussion. And then, I attended MetroCog Policy Board, I attended a webinar, uh, facilitated with Department of Human Services and the Association of Minnesota Counties on the federal changes to SNAP, uh, really a reiteration or a further follow-up with the discussion that Quinn provided to the board uh, the previous day. I attended the chamber legislative wrap-up at the Sheriff's Department, I appreciate, uh, those folks that attended, uh, we had Senate Majority, or Minority Leader Mark Johnson, Representative Joy, Representative Gander, Senator Kupac. I also had an additional MetroCog meeting on Friday, and then yesterday, the solid waste advisory discussion in anticipation for our contract negotiations on Thursday. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Bear.
On Tuesday, I attended the County EDC/EDA quarterly discussion with all the members here. We had great input by everybody that was there, we had people from Dilworth, Glendon, Holly, and Morehead there. And then on Friday, I also attended the Legislative Review Guide Wrap-Up with the Chamber. Those were all my reports.
Commissioner Abinger.
On Thursday, uh, I'm sorry, I'm checking my notes again, Tuesday, the fifteenth, attended the PIC Committee, which covered, uh, the issues we had at today's meeting. Uh, later that day, I attended the, uh, EDA meeting, which is covered by Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Bear. Uh, Wednesday, uh, I attended the inaugural meeting of the CAS, Clay County Interagency Council on Homelessness. Uh, very good attendance there. A lot of work is gonna be done by that group, and I look forward to working with them. Uh, later that day, I attended the West Central Regional Juvenile Center meeting. Uh, we passed the, uh, the next year's budget, as approved, um, by the commission today, or as presented by the commission today. And later on that day, I attended the Chamber Legislative Wrap-Up, uh, grateful to our legislators that came, came in and presented to us into the chamber for the work they did. It was covered also by Commissioner Bear and Commissioner Mojo. And following that, I went to Lake Agassy Regional Library Board of Trustees Financial Committee meeting, uh, where we continued to negotiate with the City of Morehead on a lease, uh, for the, in the new library that's being built. At this point, we don't have a, a, a final agreement. And yesterday, I attended the quarterly meeting of the Restorative Practices Advisory Committee. Uh, I'm proud to say that we've got a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant from, due to the hard work of, uh, Michelle Carey, uh, with the County Attorney's Office, she's got this set up, we have a pan, a group of individuals from the community, they're gonna continue to meet and help develop this, uh, for an extent, expanded uh, restorative justice, uh, program within our schools. And that completes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Kravina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, last Tuesday, I too was part of the EDA meeting that's been, uh, already talked about. Uh, I also had an adult mental health, um, a monthly meeting, which is a welcome meet. Uh, this is something they do once a year, inviting, uh, other potential members to come see what we do. Um, normally, a group is around twenty-five, and we had thirty-five people there, so, hopefully, uh, maybe a couple new providers will jump in as well as consumers. Um, also, on Tuesday, I had the Morehead City Planning Meeting, a couple items of interest is that we had, uh, conditional use permits for, uh, new, uh, dynamic display signs to be allowed at the new, uh, locations. And then also, on the south side of Morehead, on Twenty-Eighth Street and Fortieth Avenue, there is a new development going in down there called Partridge Creek. And we rezoned from, uh, uh, transitional to, uh, RDL three, and also, uh, approved their preliminary, um, and final plan. Uh, and Wednesday, I had, uh, my monthly, um, Finance Committee for the, uh, Historical and Cultural Society. Uh, this was, um, was, uh, joined with me was our new Executive Director, who I spoke about earlier today. And we're in good standing, and with, where we are in the year, the budget looks, uh, in good shape for the year. On Thursday, I had a, um, uh, Clay County Intergovernmental Committee meeting, joining the, um, uh, school districts of Morehead and Dilworth, and then also, um, some of the board members, the, uh, we talked about legislative impacts, we talked, um, of the session. And then mostly the discussion was, um, with the, uh, superintendents from DJF and Morehead talking about their upcoming referendums. Uh, after that meeting, I had my, um, uh, monthly HRA meeting. Uh, mainly, uh, there's just the acceptance of, uh, grants, uh, from the homeless to house renewal, and then also, uh, homework starts with, and home renewal, so that was good to receive that money, it's imperative for the pros, uh, programs that they do. Um, we also talked about, uh, the staffing has been in the, um, the, excuse me, I'm pointing the wrong way. Uh, over at the, um, Family Service Center, and those are, they'll be vacating those, I believe, by August first, and we've found other places. And then last but not least, we'll be having our meeting, August twenty-sixth, I believe, with us, and we'll be discussing, uh, some of their upcoming levy. The, let's see, and then, um, after that, I had the, my West Central Initiative Economic Development Meeting. I did that virtually, that, that's held in Ferguson Falls. Um, this is, uh, one resolution that we went through for, uh, the revolving, um, loan program that's been so successful. Um, uh, we also, um, had legislative updates, how it affects the, the partnership, and, uh, those were the main things. And then, uh, that evening, or Tuesday evening, was. And then that evening, or Friday evening, was our chamber legislative review, it's been mentioned, and I really appreciate the, the legislators that did join us, Mark Johnson, Steve Arner, right, how do you say his name, last name?
Gander.
Ken, thank you, and Rod Kupchak and Jim Joy. Good to hear from them as always, and we always appreciate our conversations with them and their openness to us talking to them at any time. And then yes, yesterday, I already mentioned earlier today with our proclamation, we had the retirement party for Maureen Johnson with the Historical Society. That's my report.
All right, thank you. Dave, did you have some additional?
Yeah, I, I missed one of my meetings on Thursday, attended the Clay County Suicide and Substance Prevention Coalition. We had changes to 988 that were presented on the Push Three Option, Press Three Option, the, the Trevor Project, and then Annabelle Default from Public Health, and Oliver Franzell from NDSU covered the one program, opioid and meloxone program. And that completes my presentation.
All right, thank you. July 15th, we had the PIC meeting, we discussed the Department of Vehicle deal that we dealt with today, along with the change in classification, reclassification for this vacant civil commitment, social work position to adult mental health, and then we also heard some concerns from Rory Schmitz regarding the new partnership for health between Clay and Becker County regarding client data hosting. Rory's got some real concerns about that, as, as we all know, and it, so we're, we supported Rory's efforts to maybe see if there can't be a separation there. That goes to, but also that falls in line with what MCIT has suggested that we do, just to keep our own internal information. Also, the Tuesday, the 15th, we also had the EDC/EDA quarterly meeting, I don't, don't need to say anymore on that meeting, it's been well-covered. The Intergovernmental Committee meeting on the 17th, Commissioner Kravina talked about that, we did have a little discussion regarding legislative impacts. DGF mentioned that they are going after a 850 per year, or $850,000 per year for 10 years referendum for their needs for their school districts. Morehead talked, at that time, they had not decided on a referendum, but I, it's my understanding that, was it just Monday, yesterday, they did also have two different deals that are going to be on the ballot, the referendums on the ballot in November. July 17th, we had the West Central Regional Juvenile Center meeting, that was, we talked all, about all of that this morning with James, and most of it was in regards to the 2026 budget, 2025 budget update, which still shows we're probably looking at revenues over expenditures, and that'll be moving forward, that will be used in previous, in the upcoming years. And then yesterday afternoon, we did have a solid waste subcommittee meeting to discuss ongoing issues. That concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated, participated in PIC, which is well-covered, along with the EDC/EDA meeting. That afternoon, I, we met with Extension to go through their 2026 proposed budget. On the 16th, I met with Brian Melton on a series of county issues. I also had a meeting, meeting that afternoon with members in the White Earth Nation, City of Moreheads, and City of Dilworth, to hear updates on the casino project. The, on the 17th, participated in the Intergovernmental Meeting, which has been well-covered. That morning, also participated in a public outreach planning meeting with Public Health, City of Morehead, in regards to the Budweiser, Budweiser plant funds we received. On the 17th, also participated in MCCJPA meeting, which is coming up this week, we talked about a relocation, a reimbursement request, and also they're continuing to work on the plotting, plating, excuse me, of Holy Cross Township parcels that are impacted by the diversion, to make sure that in the future, our, our Recorder's Office will have an easier time with those properties. Met with the sheriff and his staff on their budget on the 17th, participated in the chamber legislative event. I just wanted to note that part of tomorrow and through the rest of the week, I will be at a MACA, MACA conference, and again, just for our citizens, next week is the 5th Tuesday, and so there will be no board meeting next week. That concludes my report.
All right, Darren.
Okay, very quickly, Tuesday, PIC meeting, EDA/EDC quarterly meeting, I attended both of those. We had a pre-budget meeting with Extension, I was at the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday. On Wednesday, I had a meeting with Steve and Anna, and worked on some union costing sheet. Thursday, had a Triple MC meeting, I had the Correctional Sergeant's first negotiations, and Highway Department's first negotiations, also attended the chamber legislative wrap-up. On Friday, I had worked on the union costing sheets a little bit more, I had Anna's evaluation. On Monday, I had Cannabis Business Inquiry meeting with Matt to discuss a, citizens wanting to set up a cannabis grow-in retail business, and I also attended yesterday the meeting to discuss the partnership between Clay County and Morehead on the Resource Recovery Center. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Sarah?
Nothing?
All right, we are adjourned.